And I'm going to record it to this computer.
Recording in progress.
All right, so I am right now, I'm going to let in, we've got two people in the waiting room who I will let in.
Did you just do that, Paul? The recording where it, the notification where it said it was recorded?
Yeah, I had to shut it off.
Okay.
Okay. All right, it's five o'clock and we call this subcommittee meeting of the Valentine Property to order. Our first order of business today is to review and to approve meeting minutes from our last meeting. I did review the minutes and they seemed fine to me, so I'm ready to approve those minutes, make a motion to do so.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes 2-0. Our next order of business is...
Can you let me in there, Steve?
Yes.
Is a discussion based on our past, previous meeting, our one and only meeting. We had a request to discuss kind of the legal issues and ramifications of both Article 97 land and the CPA restrictions as well. So, we invited Town Council Lisa Mead this evening, and so Lisa, if you want to review your findings and your information regarding both of those topics.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and let me, let me start by talking, like going back to the beginning, right? So, this property, when it was acquired by the town, essentially became subject to two different sets of regulations or regulatory authorities, shall we say, right? One was the regulatory authority under the Community Preservation Act, and that is based upon the funds that were used. Community Preservation Act requires you to put certain restrictions on property even though they don't give a time period by which that has to happen when you go to use those funds. So, this case involved a historic preservation restriction on the buildings that are on the property, and then there was open space money used for the property as well, and that will require a conservation restriction. And so, those are two documents that would need to get eventually recorded and worked out depending upon, the terms of which would depend upon how you choose to continue to use the property. So, then that is married with the fact that the town, when it voted, the actual vote at town meeting, was to use the property, and there are three lots involved in all of what we call 133 West Union Street, to use the property for open space and parkland purposes. And that vote essentially would make the land classified, the Commonwealth would say, under Article 97, which is to protect public lands. And the, so the question then becomes, what do, what are the strictures around both of those regulatory authorities related to the reuse of the property? And so, when you go down this path, you kind of have to think about how you satisfy both of those requirements. I think the historic preservation restriction is the easiest because it applies to the structures and in accordance with the vote and the general tenor on requirements under preservation restrictions. Any rehabilitation of the buildings would need to be done in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards. It really governs the outside of the structures, it doesn't govern the use of the structures, it doesn't govern what happens on the inside of the structures, doesn't prevent you from adding on to the structures. But that all needs to be worked out and certainly can be, there are plenty of both public and private properties in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and quite frankly, across the United States of America that have preservation restrictions on them. As far as the Article 97, the big picture in Article 97, when that was passed, the purpose of Article 97 was essentially to prevent or limit the disposal of public lands in the Commonwealth. And so whether that be by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts itself, or by its political subdivisions, namely municipalities, once land becomes Article 97 land, it can't be quote "disposed of" absent a process that has gone through, through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts state legislature and local regulatory bodies. So the question is, what does dispose of mean? Certainly it doesn't mean that you don't ever get to use the land for anything other than just as it is, it doesn't have to lay fallow. There are plenty of examples across the Commonwealth where Article 97 land is used for things other than just having it be open space with no use at all. For example, on one end, I will tell you that DCR has lots of public lands, and they run concessions off of those lands, and they lease out buildings on those lands to run concessions. Those leases typically are five years, for example. It doesn't prevent public access to those lands, but it certainly encourages the use of those lands and helps facilitate the use of the lands for whatever purpose they might be intended. So for example, DCR might own shore, shoreside land, and they might have a kayak rental that they lease out to. They might have a concession that serves food, you know, things of that nature. So, those are little examples. There's Article 97 land in the city of Newton, for example, that's a golf course. That's how it was originally purchased, it became Article 97 land but had a continuing use on it. And then there are lots of things underneath that that allow public access. So, the question really is, what is disposition and what is the use? The use has to be consistent with the public lands, that is, if you bought a farm, for example, and it became public land and/or required a conservation restriction, could you then have a farm stand? And could you allow people to have gardens on it, or truck patches? Or could you allow the vegetables and fruit, for example, that were raised on it be sold from that land or used on that land for other purposes? I think all of the answers to that is yes, depending on how you structure, how you allow people to use that land, right? So, you couldn't sell it to somebody else, for sure, a private party, that would be a disposal. Long-term leases are considered a disposal of the land under Article 97. But on the other hand, operating agreements, to operate land might not be considered a disposal of the land if a private party were to operate it and you allowed the appropriate public access and public use of the land. So, those are kind of the big picture items, and what's clear is that just because you have a conservation restriction on something, doesn't mean that you can't use it, that you can't have a private party involved in that conservation restriction and the use of that land. That is, all has to be drafted within the conservation restriction. The most recent case is the Westfield case that, or Westport case, excuse me, that allows that to happen. So, there are plenty of ways to do that. In this instance, you have to layer though, the Article 97 designation with the conservation designation, and then I would really say that the historic preservation restriction is important but a sideline, it doesn't have the same use restrictions on it that the other two regulatory blankets do, so to speak.
Right. Okay. So, a couple of questions that I have right off the bat is, number one, the kind of the balance or the dynamic between the CPA restrictions and in Article 97. It seems like there's a redundancy there in terms of protecting the land.
Right.
And so if you could speak to that and also speak to, you know, if we were to, what would be the process if we were to attempt to, or choose to try to remove the Article 97 designation from the property?
Right.
And my second question then would be in terms of, I think it's the big question that we all have, is, you know, the uses that would, the allowable uses under Article 97 and under CPA, given, given the way it exists today with the, with the, with the two restrictive areas.
So I think, yeah, the, just because something is designated Article 97 or CPA money is used, in which case you would need to put a conservation restriction on it, doesn't mean that the land has to stay in the state where the use that it is today, right? That, that's not, neither of those requirements require the land not to ever change. So, let's be really clear about that. I think the underlying, the underlying premise is that it remain public land for, in this instance, open space and parkland purposes, which can include a bunch of different things. So certainly the conservation restriction, if you, let's say Article 97 didn't apply, the conservation restriction would, would have to preserve the land for conservation purposes, but could have language within it to allow it to be used for various things, so long as the intent of the conservation restriction continued and the open space continued. So for example, right next door to Ashlyn, to Southborough, right? And there's a farm over in Southborough that is owned privately, it's a significant farm, maybe you're all familiar with it, but has a conservation restriction on it that's held by the town. That, that, there's actually a commercial farm stand that's run on that property, and there's a farming of the property, and a certain amount of the vegeta, vegetables and those things that are sold at the farm stand have to come from the property, right? But that's all drafted within the conservation restriction. And so, that's all acceptable. Similarly, the Westport case that I talked about earlier, there's conservation restriction on a piece of land that had like a meeting facility at it, and they charged private, for private functions at that meeting facility. That was okay, because it was allowed under the conservation restriction and didn't take away from the conservation purposes of the land, right? So, so yes, I think the land certainly can be, continue to be protected with a conservation restriction absent Article 97, right? So, but, and so they are duplicative. It's interesting, the difference is, I will be really clear, the difference is between Article 97 and a conservation restriction, land can be held privately and have a conservation restriction on it, right, and still be protected. Under Article 97, once the land is held by the public entity, it can't be quote "disposed of," right? So it has to continue to be held publicly. So that is, that, that's a big distinction between the two. But how do you, so the question is, how would one remove an Article 97 designation? So, that would take a vote of the Conservation Commission, a Parks Commission if the town had one, a vote of the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen. It would go to the legislature, it would require two-thirds vote of the legislature after review and recommendation by various agencies involved at the Commonwealth. It would also include a, a, an exchange of land, so to speak, it's like a no net loss kind of thing, like you would think about in wetlands work, right? So, the municipality who is seeking to lose or to change a designation of Article 97 land, the state would look to see how, what's going to happen with that land, first of all, and secondly, what would the ci, what would the city or town do to replace that land? So the city or town would have to take land that currently is not designated as conservation land and designate it as conservation land, or buy land and designate it as conservation land. So that's, that's the process that that would have to happen.
Lisa, when you said the town couldn't dispose of the property, you also said earlier that you can't do a long-term lease? So you're saying we, we can't do a long-term lease if the Article 97 status is still in effect?
That's correct. So, they would, depending on the length of the lease and the purpose of the lease, it is likely that the Commonwealth would deem a long-term lease, 30 years, you know, you know, it depends on what it is. We know that five years is okay, because for example, DCR has five-year leases in place, so we know five years is okay. We also know that 30 years is not okay, because they've also deemed the 30-year lease basically a disposition of land. So, anything that has, what would be considered to have an interest in land, would be considered a disposition. A license would not be, an operating agreement would not be.
So, Lisa, what, I'm probably just asking the same question Steve did, but maybe in a different way. What does Article 97 give us in terms of, you know, protection that the conservation restriction doesn't give us? Is there anything different or new added on top of that? So it's like we've got these layers?
Right.
You can call it redundancy or duplicative, I think some of the terms are, but, I mean, is there, are there some things that Article 97 covers that a conservation restriction wouldn't cover, and so it makes sense to have them both apply to a certain parcel? Or is it basically, you're just accomplishing the same thing, just one has a few more strings attached, I guess you could say?
So, I would say to you that both of them certainly protect the conservation interests or the public land interests of, well, no, I'm going to say conservation interests of the land, right? Certainly both of them protect the conservation interests of the land or the use of the land for conservation interests. I think the, the, the difference between the two is the prevention of disposition. 97 prevents disposition, article, conservation restriction does not prevent quote "disposition." Because, but you always have to protect it. Both of them provide a forever protection, a perpetual protection of the land, for sure.
Are there any other communities that have, like, a piece of land that has both a conservation restriction and Article 97 protections on them?
I don't know the answer to that. I haven't, I, I could see if I can find out. There's a, I mean, I'm sure that there is a database with the folks that do the, the CRs, and I talk to them pretty frequently for obvious reasons around the Commonwealth, so I could see what their database says.
Brandy?
So, from your perspective, Lisa, obviously, we would need to talk to the Select Board and see where we feel, you know, we want to go with this. But, you know, from, for our purposes, for these restrictions, we're tasked with, with creating the restrictions for both the conservation and the historical, the restrictions. And so, from your perspective, if we, if we craft these restrictions with the possibility of going forward and trying to remove the Article 97, because from my perspective, you know, the disposition of property with a long-term lease and not being able to do that is, that's a real prohibitive, you know, I mean, we're, we're trying to utilize this property and bring it to its full potential, and not being able to offer a long-term lease to a potential leasing, or whatever it would be.
Operator, like an operator, right?
Right. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no incentive for someone to want to invest in the property if we're not able to do that. So, which would mean that, you know, as a community, we would need to foot the whole bill to, to renovate and restore the property to its full potential. So from your perspective, sorry, long-winded question, but I would, I would assume we'd want to continue with the process of drafting those restrictions and then bringing those restrictions, say, to the Conservation Commission, as sort of like the, you know, once, if the board, the Select Board signs off on it, then we would bring that to the Conservation Commission, they would feel comfortable with what we've drafted and vote, and then we'd kind of take it through the process at that point? Is that, am I reading that right?
Well, I think, I think it's, so yes, you, that's certainly a process. So the question is, you know, what kind of stewardship, if you will, do you want to have on the, on the land, right? So that it ma, it's maintained in a manner in which you want it maintained and used in the community that protects the current resources that exist there. And I think that there are a lot of opportunities to do that under a conservation restriction, for sure. And then it becomes a practical matter about how the investment is made and can be made in order to make that a decision. And so, we're closely with the Commonwealth to make sure as we're drafting the restriction, that it meets the needs of the town and meets the requirements of the Commonwealth at the same time to protect the resource, right? So that's, that's what they want to make sure of.
Right. And we do, and we do too. You know, that's our priority too.
Yeah, right, right.
I just want to make note for everybody that's in attendance right now that we are recording this meeting, and I, we plan to open it up to questions and to guests after the committee and have, has had an opportunity to do so, so just bear with us. And I know a few people came in late, so, and I know Scott, one of your questions last time was related to, you know, a better understanding of the, of the legal ramifications and legal requirements. So, if you need to ask questions that may have been answered already, please do so. But, so it seems that the, the ramifications for us for Article 97 at this point is that we have, we, we would be restricted in terms of the disposition of the property. And, you know, the, as far as the conservation restriction, the, the historical preservation restriction, we're obligated to do that anyway, we all agree, that's why we purchased the property, and we will, and, and that's the document that we will, we create will reflect those two components.
Right.
Any other questions from, from the committee?
So, I just had one more question, Lisa, because, so the town can't own the property and also hold the conservation restriction, right?
That, that's actually correct. You would have to have a third party hold the conservation restriction as the town owns the property, because otherwise it's called a merger of title.
Okay.
And I would assume we would need that in place before, say, the legislature and the state signs off on this?
Well, if you were, if you were going to try to remove the Article 97 designation, I think that one of the things that you would want to do is make sure that the, you know, a lot, so I, in another community I had, what they wanted to do was, they wanted to, there was a developer who wanted to buy a piece of conservation land that wasn't great, and in exchange was purchasing other land that was abutting, other conservation land of the town, and they were going to donate that to the town, right? So, that, that conservation land that was going to be exchanged was actually going to be turned into, commercial housing is what it was being turned into. That got approved by the legislature because of the swap. I think that in addition to the swap, knowing that the land is going to continue to be protected and the, and the resource and the goal of both Article 97 as well as the Community Preservation Act and conservation restriction purposes was remaining in place, it would make the town's position stronger, for sure.
Okay.
Okay. I have another question, just bear with me a second. I just, can you speak to, you know, we, we, we all agree and acknowledge that the, that we're required to put restrictions, the two restrictions on the property. Speak to the, a little bit to that process and that, that timeline for, if there is a timeline, for creating the document, you know, actually having it supported by, by the state, having it supported by the town, and then going out to, to find holders for, for the restrictions. So can you speak to that? I don't, my understanding is that there's no specific timeframe for actually determining or obtaining a holder? I mean, the fact that we, we have, we're obligated to, to have restrictions on the property is my understanding, that by virtue of the use of, of the funding.
The CPA statute does not require, does not have a timeline requirement. There is no deadline by which one needs to put a restriction on the property. I think that in the instance, given how, once restrictions are placed, that if the town is trying to determine what a good, how to potentially continue on as stewards of the property, and then try to help have an influx of money and to help preserve the property, and in addition, work with the state in that process, that those documents need to be worked on kind of as a group together, and then before things are finally finalized, then they would be finalized, because, you know, different things may come up regarding areas of preservation on the property and, you know, additions on the building or how the building is going to be redone. So I think that it's important to work forward on those documents, but not to actually finalize them until exact, until you know exactly what's going to happen to everything, right?
Right. Okay. Good. Michael? Anything at this point? Brandy?
No.
No? So, why don't we open this up to our guests this evening? I see that we have one raised hand, Kathy Van Lanker, if you want to.
Hi. Hi, Kathy Van Lanker, 52, Donna Lee Lane in Ashlyn. One question that I have is that, from what I understand, when we did the process for Warren Woods in the Conservation Commission, you really need to get your CR holder online at the same time as you start working on the document. Is that correct, Lisa?
So that's, that's what I was saying earlier, like you kind, all the parties need to be working together on it so that you don't finalize something before you have, before you know the details of either the, the holder of the CR, the user of the property, and the town's interests.
Right. Because I just wanted to clarify that, because it sounded like the committee was going to try to start working on a document before actually finding a holder. I think they need to find the holder as well and then start working on the document together with the holder.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily know that that's the case. I think the determination is what's, what's the use, and then who is the best holder of that particular kind of conservation purpose.
Yeah. Our task, Kathy, is, is the drafting of a document, not the finding of a holder, and, you know, I, if we have to do both concurrently, then, then I, you know, certainly we'll, we'll discuss it at the Select Board, but this committee is, is tasked with, with drafting a document to submit.
Okay. The other question that I have was about the Article 97. And to be clear, the process is that you would have to go through all these committees and then at some point go to the legislature and also submit to the legislature the swap of land that we will do in the town, correct?
So it would be done essentially through a home rule petition, and the home rule petition would set out all of these details, including what the exchange was.
Okay. And there does need to be an exchange of land somewhere, equal to that, correct?
Well, actually, you use the word "have," and the policy, the DEP disposition policy is very clear, that the legislature has the authority to act however they want to act, but it is the policy that there be an exchange.
Okay, okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted a clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing or hearing none?
Oh, there's Cindy.
Cindy, hey, Cindy.
Hello, hi. I just wanted to thank Lisa for clarifying that the town cannot be the holder of the CR and the owner of the land. I think that's, that's been a confusing point for us, and, and in terms of what the CR is and Article 97, they're not dependent upon each other, they typically work well together, but they're, they're very different. And I, I really appreciate the, the information, because I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding as to, as to what, what they represented. And, and I do think that the process for disposition, if the sa, if the town were to sell or lease or the, the property, I mean, they would have to go through the disposition process, and, and it is quite a process, it requires two-thirds vote, it was on the warrant, specifically on the warrant, and my, my opinion is, is that you really, the committee should be really working to try to find a holder as, that would work with the town to hold this restriction and could do the things that, that we wanted to do.
Good. Well, thank you, Cindy, and, and just to clarify again, I, I, I don't disagree that we should be looking for potential holders, and we will bring that to the Select Board, and I think that, that's where it will be worked on. This, again, this committee is tasked with, with drafting a document. Anyone else? Seeing or hearing no one at this point. So, the next item on the agenda is a discussion on allowable uses, and I, and again, I want to defer to, to Lisa on this question, as far as, you know, the, the breadth of, of uses that we can submit and start to, I think, put into a document. You know, seems to me, doing some research, that it's, it's fairly broad within the, within the confines of a, you know, both the, a conver, a conservation restriction, so if you can speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I, I think that it is, and, you know, again, it, it, the devil is in the details, right? So, there's not, there's nothing to say, for example, you can't have a commercial activity on a land that has a conservation restriction on, right? Or even Article 97 land, so long as there's public access and participation in that activity. So, for example, there are golf courses that are on community-owned land in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that are run by private entities, but there is, are lots of public access provisions written into those operating agreements and/or leases, depending on what kind of land it is. So, that, that's an example. And, so I think that, you know, depending on, you know, could you have the structures, you know, run commercially and somehow fed off of the activities on, on the rest of the land, and drafting into that how the public access is going to occur on that land, and how it's beneficial to what the land is, an old farm, for example. I'm sorry, I keep coming back to that, but it's like the, you know, the most obvious example. The answer is yes, I think that you can do those kinds of uses. Could you have, somebody gave me the example of the Hopkinton Music Theater venue, that's very different, that's a very different situation. That land was not originally bought for conservation land, they did put a conservation restriction on portions of the land, but not the part of the land that has the actual music venue on it, interestingly enough. But I can foresee that kind of a use on the land, also, that allows for generation of funds to take care of the land and the structures, and also have public access.
Okay. Any questions? Michael, you, you were bringing up the, the, our, the original RFP?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the original RFP that the committee had put together, because I know that there were some uses defined there that the, the committee would have liked to have seen based on some of the feedback that it, it had received. I just got to get to that, though.
Okay. So, you know, just leading into this, and, and we don't want to keep you, Lisa, any longer than we have to this evening, but just leading into, we have a better.
I'm sorry, Steve, I'm finding it really hard to hear you.
You can, you can't hear me, Scott?
That's better, and I want to hear you.
All right, then I'll, I'll speak directly into it. The, so leading, you know, we, we have a, obviously a somewhat better understanding of the, the legal environment we're, we're dealing with, and so at this point, your, your best recommendations for moving forward with creating a document? Is there a template available? I know that there's, the state has a, a template, I believe CPC has a template as well. Do you recommend, you know, going that direction?
Right, so in both instances, so under the CPC, we have to enter into restrictions that are perpetual restrictions, and so those restrictions, well, at least for the open space, the historical preservation restriction does not have to be perpetual, but in any event, both of those restrictions under Chapter 184 require approval of the respective secretariates. And so we do need to use a base form that's approved by the Commonwealth, which I have, and, but, but, that being said, there are areas in those documents that would be specific to the Valentine property in this instance, and how you use it, and how you want the restriction to apply. So yes, we use the base form, and I can provide that to, to the committee.
Okay.
And then there are areas within that, that you would allow these other things. So for example, you're familiar, and I know you are, because we've done a number of conservation restrictions together, that the conservation restriction has a standard form, prohibited uses and permitted uses, right? There's a list under prohibited and permitted. And so, within those structures, you would allow, for example, we would change the list of permitted uses and/or prohibited uses, depending on what it is that you decide to do, so long as the underlying protections remain.
Okay. So you, you'll provide that document to Brandy, Michael, and I, and we can, we can start that process.
Yes.
And I, and I think what Michael is, is, is going to speak to is, is to start with the, as a template, the work of the Valentine Committee. So, Michael, did you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, we just started talking about uses, and so I just wanted to pull up what the committee had put in as potential preferred uses for the property, and again, it's, it's included but not limited to opportunities for agricultural and farming, educational or community programs, event space and community art theater space, a bed and breakfast, a co-working commercial kitchen, and a restaurant. So do you see any issues with any of those, Lisa, being incorporated as part of this, as potential uses?
So I think that the, so, I'm not, I don't see issues, so to speak, I think, because I think you can draft and, and restrict a lot of things, so I think the things that you would have to be careful of is the bed and breakfast and the restaurant, right? So both of those would have to be connected to the uses on the property. So I certainly can see a farm-to-table restaurant, right? Depending on, obviously, it's going to be in the barn area kind of thing, right? So the question is, how is it all integrated? The bed and breakfast, you know, again, it depends on how that's drafted, how, how big it is, if it's, if it's confined to the structures and/or additions to the structures or related structures. So I don't, none of those send off red flags to me, I think that they will take some work, and that's why I go back to the comment I made earlier, is that if you have, if you have a likely proponent or steward of the property, that, that's why you don't want to finalize the, either of the documents until you know how that's all going to work together. But we would work hand-in-hand with the Commonwealth in drafting those, so that there weren't any surprises in the end.
Okay. Good.
Because I think, you know, from our perspective, we want to keep it as close to those preferred uses as, you know, if we, if we can, because I think we want to be able to cast as wide of a net as possible for whoever may want to invest in the property.
And I, I think, Brandy, it goes back to, it goes back to the issue of disposition, right? And Article 97. So I think certainly all of those things can happen under either scenario, depending on how they're crafted, and, you know, what the plan is, so to speak. However, the issue becomes financing and investment, and whether or not the proponent can do that without disposing of the land, could they do it under an operating agreement, so to speak, without an interest in the land? Or if you change the interest in the land from Article 97 to protection with the conservation restriction or preservation restriction, then that changes that analysis.
Okay.
Okay.
So at this point, we can, I'd like to open it up again to any, any questions from, from guests this evening? Seeing or hearing none, Cindy, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, again, I just, I just wanted to, you know, for clarification purposes, just wanted to clarify that even with CR restrictions, but even with Article 97 in place, it does allow, as, as Lisa spoke to, different types of scenarios, allow for charges, to be able to charge, to have income consistent with the, you know, with the open space and parklands, I guess provided that those, the income, the revenue be used for the upkeep of the property, goes back into the property. I, I think that's what I heard. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think, I don't think it's, it's exclusive to that, Cindy. Again, I think it depends on what it is, right? So if you're operating, if you have to have employees that operate on the property, right? So you're allowed to play, pay your employee, right? So that wouldn't necessarily be considered going back into the property necessarily. So I think, I think that, I hear what you're saying, but I just wanted to be clear that it, so nobody thought that only the money made had to go right back into the property, right?
So again, it's the devil's in the details.
Correct.
All right, Kathy?
Hi, it, Lisa, one of the things it seemed to say that really, the restaurant, if they try to do something that is like a commercial restaurant or a bed and breakfast, that it needs to stay within the footprint of the current buildings. I mean, the rest of that land is supposed to be open space and stay as Article 97, so is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. In fact, I broadened my statement to make sure that I didn't say that.
Okay.
So, just be, Article 97 really goes to disposition, right? I mean, obviously, it's open space, it's parklands or creation land, but that doesn't mean you can't have a building on it. So there may be a natural addition to the barn or the house that would be appropriate for the use that would be consistent with the use of the land. Do I think that you could put a, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand square foot building at the opposite end of the property and have a brand-new use on it? I don't, you know, I think that might be pushing it, but I think that if it's integrated into the existing structures, both for the purposes of the preservation restriction, the conservation restriction, and even Article 97, again, the devil is in the details, but I don't think it would necessarily run afoul of that.
Okay, and so it would be really in addition to that structure, not another structure placed further in or on the rest of the property?
I don't, I don't know, you know, really, it's, talking in a vacuum is difficult, because I, yeah. I was using extreme example, like you were going to build a gymnasium at the opposite end of the property, that may be an issue, I don't know the.
But, but how about, Lisa, a, a building that was supporting, you know, let's say, agricultural uses or, you know, that, that component?
Right, that might be okay.
Yeah, okay. Kathy, you good?
Yes, and, and all of that would also depend upon what the CR holder would be willing to deal with as well, correct? Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, I see Scott has his hand up. Scott?
Thank you, Steve. So, as I recall, the property was composed, or is composed of three parcels, so I'm wondering if we could have, like, conservation restrictions on the sections without buildings, currently without buildings, and historic preser, kind, a historic restriction on the parcel with the building, so can it be, can we separate them out in terms of how that's handled going forward?
So I think that's a really interesting question, Scott, because I had a conversation that was related to the CPA funds. And so their intent is that the land be, right, somehow? And so oftentimes, and most times, historic preservation restriction.
Excuse me, Lisa, excuse me a second, you, you broke up several times, if you can more or less start over, please?
Okay. So, sorry about that. So what I said was, that was an interesting question, because I had a similar conversation with the former, now retired General Counsel to the Department of Revenue, Little Division Services, related to the restrictions necessary to protect CPA. And interest vine law restriction of some sort is placed on the funds we're used for. So to your point, Scott, that accomplish it, specifically also because historic preservation restrictions approved by the Commonwealth also cover the premises, and so oftentimes, and I'm doing one right now, there is a, a piece of land that's segmented by a condominium, so to speak. So the premises all around the house that the restriction is going on is also covered under the restriction. So when you go to put a preservation restriction on, you, the historic preservation restriction, you include the existing conditions, and you include proposed conditions. And so the state wants to, the H.C. wants to see, what are you posing to do on this land, and how does it impact the historic value of the structures that exist? Hence the idea that you could act, put additions on something and still meet the Secretary Interior standards. So I think the, the, what they're blocking there, Scott, is fact, I think that would be sufficient, because it meets the intent and purpose of the CPA, because restrictions are placed on both, are all three parcels.
Right, all three.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, many, anyone else with a question for Lisa at this point? If not, then we, we thank Lisa for your time this evening, and for, for the insights, so.
See you tomorrow, Mike, take care.
All right, thanks, Lisa, appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Bye-bye. So our next, actually, we're, we're, we've gone through our agenda at this point, and I think the next, I think in my mind, the, the next action we should consider is, is preliminary drafting of a, of a document, creating that, and I think we're going to have to work at least independently, and then come back to a meeting and kind of share our thoughts at that point, does that make sense?
I think so, I think if Lisa sends us the, the base documents.
Right.
That will give us a good starting point, and then taking a look at the RFP that the Valentine Committee has put together to do the prohibited and allowable uses, and then I think that, that's a good starting point.
Right, so just to reiterate, I think, you know, we, we, we need to work independently and then come back to a, to an open meeting to discuss our, our independent work, and then also to solicit input. to solicit input from any guests that we might have.
Yep.
Okay? So, uh, at this point, we're not going to set up a meeting date right now, I think we'll wait until we get the document from Lisa, and we can decide on a date. I'm assuming it'll be sometime in August, though, we're not going to delay it too long. We want to keep this moving, so. Any other, we'll give you one last opportunity before we sign off this evening. Robin, I see your hand up.
If I'm, you're going to get away with it. Have we reached out, have you guys reached out to anyone to hold a conservation restriction? Are there any interested parties?
We haven't done that as yet, Robin, and we talked about this earlier, I don't know, maybe you missed it. We are, this committee is tasked with drafting a document. Uh, we're going to bring back to the Select Board, we have a meeting next week, we will discuss this, and we'll discuss what the information that Lisa provided today regarding kind of the concurrent work of finding holders, drafting documents, working with the state, and kind of doing this all in a, in hopefully a coordinated fashion?
So, more to come.
And, I know it doesn't affect this committee, but have there been requests for proposals for the other work, for the roof and for the foundation? I think I kind of want to address that to Michael, sorry, Michael.
No, 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 that's okay. Um, so Doug Small, it's not going to be Doug, it's going to be Roy Correa, and Doug Scott, and then also Jeff Bell, who's our new maintenance guy, quote-unquote, are going to be reaching out to you to have a meeting and talk about the scope of work that you used and stuff.
Great.
Just to make sure that the scope is accurate and everything before moving forward. So, have they not reached out to you yet, Robin?
Uh, Roy has, uh, today, as a matter of fact, but wasn't sure of the time and the place, so. I haven't received an email from anyone, Michael, so that would be helpful.
So, Roy's reached out today? Okay.
Right.
Okay, if there's nothing else from guests, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. These subcommittees are very interesting, when you've got two people making motions, and seconds, and so on, but, uh, we are now adjourned, and we will advise everybody, again, when we will meet in several weeks. So, thank you, and enjoy the wet weather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.